The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
We're going to call the special council meeting of City of Cape Canaveral order for May 8th, 6:00 PM, and we're all on CMT. I'd like to read an advisory. COVID-19 pandemic advisory due to the COVID-19 pandemic emergency. This will be held virtually by Communications Media Technology, CMT. Statement of CMT proceedings. With this new technology, we anticipate some hiccups along the way, and we will continue to evolve as we get better, as we go, hopefully. As Chair, my job is to keep the agenda flowing, afford adequate public input. Before we get started, I want to reiterate what is written at the top of the agenda. If you are listening via phone, you will not be able to comment. You can only listen. If you want to comment, you need to go to the webinar link. Going on the agenda were our additional instructions in the agenda about how to raise your hand when you are on the webinar. For the meeting to run efficiently, we should not talk over each other. And here's some guidelines. As Chair, I will keep the microphone unmuted at all times to maintain the flow of the meeting. All other panelists, the council members, select city staff are to keep their microphones muted until called upon. When you have finished speaking, please mute your microphones. Panelist has their camera on and needs to speak out of sequence. Please raise your hand, and I will do my best to acknowledge and accommodate you as the time flow of the conversation allows. If you do not have a camera, please briefly unmute your microphone and get my attention. Cameras are preferred, and we all have cameras. Wes, you're not on camera again. You're gone.
There you go.
Sorry. If a council member or panelist has their camera on, oh, I already had that. Either the attorney or I will introduce the items or the item. I will call each council member by name, alphabetical order, to make their comments, and I will share, I shall speak last. We're going to call in the order of Mayor Pro Tem Brown, Councilmember Kellum, Councilmember Morrison, Councilmember Raymond, and then myself. I will then ask the city attorney and the interim city manager for comments. I will then ask the organizer if there's any public comments. Once we have gone through the public comments, we will return it again to the diet, and I will again ask each council member in the same order for any final comments. This should help reduce the amount of talking over each other. For public comments, we will ask staff if there are any previously submitted comments to be read into the record by staff. Those would be comments received prior to 4 o'clock this afternoon, either by telephone or online or submitted emails, comments, email addresses. Once all of those are read, I will ask staff if there are any viewers who wish to comment live during the meeting. If you are a webinar viewer and you wish to comment live during the meeting, click on the hand icon up in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. Ensure your microphone is turned on. Please be patient. If all works as we expect, staff will unmute your microphone at the appropriate time, and then we'll tell you you are live and ask you to start with your name and address, and you can then begin to speak. You will have three minutes to speak. Please use your appropriate decorum. The council can then respond to your comment, and we will move on to the next community comment dinner until all have been heard. Staff will not be monitoring the questions and functions of this remote meeting software. Alrighty, so we're going to go ahead and get into our agenda. The first thing would be to do, have the call roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown? I didn't hear you. Oh, he's gone. Mayor Hoag?
Here.
Councilmember Kellum?
Here.
Councilmember Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember, can you hear me now?
Yes, you're here.
Here.
Thank you.
Mike Brown's here.
And Councilmember Raymond's here. Thank you.
Okay, the Pledge of Allegiance, and I don't have a flag. But we can go ahead with the pledge. Nikki, would you do the first, please?
Sure. Are we going to stand? I'm standing.
There's our flag. Thank you.
I'm up.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, long nations, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
Thank you, Nikki.
Yep.
Okay, public participation. Anybody that has any item they want to speak on other than anything on the agenda? Daniel, do we have anybody else?
Yes, sir. We currently have a hand raised for Steve Miller. So I will go ahead and unmute Mr. Miller.
I would like to read the announcement first for that. I'm just asking if we had anybody, because otherwise we'd move on. We do have a criteria for that. Any member of the public may address any items that do not appear on the agenda or any agenda item that is listed on this agenda for final official action by the city council, including approval of the agenda minutes information items and quasi judicial emergency items. Citizens will be limited to the comments of three minutes. The city council will not take any action under the public participation section of the agenda, and the council may schedule items not on the agenda as regular items and act upon them in the future. Please review the follow the special instructions referenced above to public comments for this meeting. Okay, agenda. Mr. Organizer, we go ahead and hear our first public comment.
All right, Mr. Steve Miller, you are on. Please state your name and city of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Steve Miller, and I live at 8657 Maple Court, Cape Canaveral, Florida. I didn't think you were going to open it up to public comments just yet, but I'd be happy to proceed. I thought I would go after the council member spoke, but here we go.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Is this in reference to the item on the agenda, or is this just something you want to speak?
It is indeed on the item on the agenda.
Okay, you have to wait until we get into that item, sir.
Well, that's what I thought, but they recognized me, so I'd be happy to work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, or let me go back to Daniel. Do we have anybody else, Daniel, that has public comment on other than the agenda?
Not that I can see at this time, no, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, we'll go ahead and open up our item. It's Resolution 2011. And Mr. Garganese, do you want to read that, please, sir?
I'd be happy to. The city manager just asked me to introduce this item. This is a special meeting. The meeting was requested to discuss beach end parking. And in the course of conducting a poll of whether or not there were a majority of the city council members present, you know, staff was also doing some, getting new information regarding beach end parking with some other communities and so forth. So when a majority of the council agreed to discuss this item, you know, staff and myself, we all presumed that this august body always meets for a specific purpose. Beach end parking is, you know, is an issue that you all are familiar with, given the emergency measure that was enacted. So a resolution was prepared, not to be presumptuous on what the council would want to do, but as a contingency that in the event during this discussion, the council wanted to take any action regarding the emergency measure, you would have a resolution available if necessary. So in the course of styling the agenda, the agenda is a discussion item. It originally was styled as a discussion and possible reconsideration of this emergency measure, but in the course of putting the agenda item very quickly together, you know, staff does what it normally does is when there's a resolution or ordinance and cut and paste the title of the resolution or ordinance and puts it in the style of the agenda. So that's what's in the agenda. Notice, but again, this is a discussion item. You all will discuss the beach end parking, and if necessary, this resolution is here. Again, only if necessary.
Thank you, sir. Council, would this open it up to us? We'll start off alphabetical order. Mr. Brown, Mayor Pro Tem Brown. Comments?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say that I'm appalled that we're even considering having this emergency meeting. Why? And whose idea was this? Have we not seen the news today? 76,000 Americans have died in this pandemic. On the news today, staffers of the president and vice president have contracted the virus. We are still in the early stages of the virus. I will always err on the side of caution versus politics when it comes to the lives of Cape Canaveral citizens. The city doesn't have the resources to keep the beaches disinfected, such as the rails, bike racks, crossover. And we even got emails and text messages from people that are, people defecating on the beach. We have nothing to lose by waiting for the council meeting to address this issue. I've got emails and texts from citizens begging us not to reopen the beach, and, excuse me, the beach parking. Last I heard, the city of Cape Canaveral has had two cases. The reason we've had two cases, we are imploring our citizens to utilize social distancing. If you check some of the other cities that are similar in our size to the size of our city, they've had three times as many cases as we've had. Our numbers are low because we exercise precautions and social distancing. I will not consider lifting any beachside parking restrictions at this time, and you shouldn't either. Thank you.
Ms. Kellum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council. It's good that we're finally all here together to discuss this important issue. I think it's important to the residents, the businesses here. And I just would like to clear up an issue that I'm having trouble with before I move on. I think that I, on April 9th, or April 2nd, asked for a special meeting so, you know, the council could get together to discuss things that were going to happen in the Phase One, Phase Two, and this unprecedented situation that we've had. I could not get two more council people to agree. Again, on Sunday, May 3rd, after the county had opened up the parking, which turned the parking situation in Cape Canaveral into a calamity. There were people parking on people's lawns, people fighting with each other, residents getting mad in an already tense situation that we're all in. I called for a meeting on May 3rd so we could address this and get ahead of it and have a plan for our citizens. If you want to wait, that's fine, but at least we would have a plan. I could not get two more councilmen to agree, councilpeople to agree with that either. After that, I went to the citizens and talked to the businesses and talked to over 25, 30 people, and they all are saying, we want the parking open. And my question to council, and I'm glad we're finally together, is I don't understand how we went from no one wanting to meet under a discussion, but soon as it was framed as a rescind the parking, everyone agreed to come. And I just think that we need to be better leaders, all of us together. So businesses have a plan, and the sheriff's department has a plan, and Public Works has a plan, and we can relate to our citizens on what exactly is happening. I just don't know what, and from Monday, when I requested the meeting till Thursday, what changed? Why did you guys agree to come now and not discuss it earlier? Offered to meet with me, and then on Thursday, we received an agenda from the city manager to rescind the parking. I just wanted to talk about it. Maybe not rescinding it is the right thing. But as far as going out and talking to the businesses in our city and the residents, they want to be able to go to park in their driveway and not fight with people that are coming in and taking their spots. So anyway, finally, I want to say that I'm an elected official. I was elected by the people, and I have value. And I hope that in the future, the other councilmen will take a minute to think, well, maybe she has some value. Maybe she has something important to talk to us about before you automatically say no. And moving on from that, I just wanted to clear that up, and I would like an answer from everyone in their turn. You know, I just, not being disrespectful, just trying to understand. I was elected to do a job, and I want to do it right and do it for the people of our city. And moving on on the parking issue, people are going to come to the beach, whether we like it or not. The governor told everybody to go to the beach. And now it's, we have citizens fighting citizens, citizens fighting people. I've heard from so many people that live near the beach that they can't even park in their own yard. It's a hardship for the sheriff's department, and I'm sorry. You know, I think that, you know, Mr. Brown, Mayor Pro Tem, as being a first responder yourself, then you know how hard it is to deal with people when they're irate, and they're already irate before they get here, and then the street next to them is open and this street isn't. We have, we have, the businesses in our town are dying. And, you know, they finally can open 25%. They need the people to come here, and, you know, I think that we need to help them. Also, my other idea is a lot of the people in our city, just residents, if we're talking about that, live on the west side of A1A. They can't walk to the beach. They can't ride their bikes to the beach. And they have the right to enjoy it, and I'm glad that we, as a city, were the leaders on keeping the beach open for people to get outside. But now it's time to open the parking. They're going to come anyway, and we have to make it easier on our residents. I don't see how you can, how parking on a street end and going to the beach is going to, you're going to get COVID-19. When, if you walk to the beach, it's okay, but if you drive to the beach, I don't see that. I've heard from a lot of residents in the city that don't want the beach parking open because of the trash and the people on the dunes and not respecting our beaches and no bathrooms. And when I asked them, you know, in the world before COVID-19, what was happening then? And they all said, oh, it's been happening for years. So maybe COVID-19 and the Corona is not the problem on the beach ends. And that's another whole meeting, another whole story. And that people aren't working, and the governor told them to go to the beach. I think when everything starts to open and people go to work, and we won't have this influx of people that we have right now. And finally, I think, and if there's any good thing that could come out of this mess, and this is something that I've thought a lot about. I've lived here for 30 years, and Mr. Hoag's been here longer than that. And it was kind of nice to have quiet, empty beaches, quiet, empty streets. It reminded me of when I first moved here and how awesome this paradise that we live in is. But on the same hand, if we don't have the businesses here and the hotels and the people that come to visit, we won't be able to afford to live in this paradise with the taxes that we pay. So not only do I represent the people, I represent the businesses. I represent the people on the west side of A1A. And I think for the residents, for the police department, the sheriff's department, we need to open up the beaches. And I, you know, if we had had this meeting when I was trying to get one, we could have opened in midweek to see how it went. And if it went crazy, we could have maybe shut it down again. But now it's, you know, businesses are dying. We have to help them. So, you know, that's where I stand. I'm open for conversation. I just think that it's time for us to help our residents. And Mr. Brown, you said, you know, we don't have the resources. We have, in the code, the emergency code, there's $50,000 there that we could spend on sanitizers at the end of the beach, extra trash cans at the end of the beach. You know, instead, we spent it on other things. But I just think that there's time to, and they're going to come, whether we open the beaches or not. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Mr. Morrison?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, I just want to, we kind of got two things going on here. We've got the, you know, I think some concerns about how this meeting came about. I hear, you know, Mayor Pro Tem Brown and Councilmember Kellum, and I'm sure all the council might have opinions on that. And then we have the discussion about beach parking. And so I just want to separate those two. And I think one of them, the first one on why it took so long to maybe get a meeting, with your concern, is maybe for another meeting to figure out ways to get better at that. But for tonight, that discussion on the beach parking, I think, is where the majority of our energy should go, but it shouldn't go unnoticed on the first part with the meeting. Mayor Pro Tem Brown, I think you opened with, you know, who called this meeting? And I think Councilmember Kellum, you outlined it. I think that if you go back, the governor came out and said, with his Phase One reopening plan, shortly, you know, and laid out a process for us to follow in the state of Florida. Shortly after that, I think it was last Thursday or Friday, the county commission met. So state meets, makes an announcement, the county commission meets and it makes an announcement. And then all the cities started meeting. And I felt, and I agree with Councilmember Kellum, that was a great time to meet, to discuss. And I share the same concern, I think, with both of you. I'm not disagreeing. I don't know how this went from, I think, a discussion to a very, while it may not be presumptive, as our city attorney says, is this did creep away from what I think originally this was about. And if this council does not want to even meet to discuss a plan, let's just say you're completely, you know, for or against parking. Both of those positions, we need to have a plan because as of today, there is no end date. It's basically creating confusion in the community. I've spoke to the commander of our sheriff's department, and if anyone on this council has, you will hear a very different story than what that you're talking about, Mayor Pro Tem Brown. I, there is confusion in our community on some simple things, but that has led into an unnecessary and avoidable use of time and resources. And that has mainly been with the openings of beaches around us. The county opened up the beaches. Then the Indian Atlantic mayor of, Indian Atlantic City Mayor of their town, city, spoke up at the county commission meeting, and he said, on behalf, I'll quote, it says, Mayor Dave Berkman said he was speaking in unity with all six beachside communities, all six beachside municipalities, when he said the cities would prefer to keep their parking lots closed at least another week. Ready to start this again? That statement, I think, was fine, but it didn't represent how I felt at the time. And I certainly don't like it when I hear other mayors saying that. And I think Mayor Hoag might have met with him. But right after the governor met, that was an ideal time or made the announcement for us to come together. And I think we can't sit back and just kind of wonder how it's going to go. We could get a plan to say, hey, let's stay, keep it closed for another 90 days. And so when, I share the same confusion as Councilmember Kellum is, why did the council not want to meet when every other local government was meeting? As of today, beach parking is open in Cocoa Beach or in the process of being open, our neighboring community. Indian Harbor Beach, open, according to my records. Satellite Beach, open. Did I say them? Satellite, Cocoa Beach, and Indian Harbor Beach, all open. And down south, a couple there are closed. I think the port has made an announcement that they're going to open here Monday, or at least we're kind of coordinating with Cape Canaveral. And so what that's going to do, getting full circle back to the confusion, is citizens are coming here, they're trying to park. Cherry Down Park opened up. It created, we all saw it, confusion. The next street over is, Washington's open, every other street is open, but then Avon by the Sea opens up. And then at the time, Cocoa Beach was closed. And for the same logic that they wanted to close the beaches, beach parking, we joined in on that effort, and now they're all opening up. And so I think that it is time to have a discussion, and I want to see if I can answer your question, Mayor Pro Tem Brown, if I understand it, and I think staff or someone can, and I think it's a good question. Where did this meeting come from? Just to recap in closing here, and I know, come back on my position on whether I think this is a good idea or not, or whatever plan we want to put together, is that when the county came out with their statement that they were going to open the beaches, Cape Canaveral was in a position to respond to that. Prior to that meeting, I was notified by staff, our interim city manager, called me and asked what my position was on that. At that time, I said, I believe with the county, which I believe was going to open, I could tell, and they did, it was time for us to open it back up. But I want to make it clear, I can change my mind. And if we would have met together, you may have changed my mind. So, but at that time, I was for keeping or opening up the beaches. Then I find out that I was the only one that felt that way at the time. And that's fine. Because that Monday, a new request came in, and it's from Councilmember Kellum to have a special meeting. And so now there was two of us who were kind of starting to phase over. So pre-county meeting, I was for open. It sounded like no one else was. After the meeting, Councilmember Kellum, it sounded like she was just wanting to have a discussion. And then today, over the time period, because she didn't have her three votes or in support of meeting, it came back to me to say, well, a special meeting requires three people to meet, but if the rest of the council doesn't want to meet, there's nothing that can stop us under state law to have a public meeting. Let's get citizens together in the community. Let's meet just Councilmember Kellum and myself. And if any of the other council members want to meet, and this was for a discussion, that is it, then great, now we can call it a special meeting and action can be taken. Shortly after I was about to approve the agenda for the discussion meeting, I believe the mayor at that time had agreed to me, and now this. And it did shift. shift over to a very definitive um, resolution and I and I and I did not know it was gonna do this and it says, you know, rescind and so I think that we should meet to discuss and that's the minimum. And so, being appalled, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Brown, you shouldn't be appalled, in my opinion, from just having a discussion, I can understand if you're appalled on the rescind. That did not come from me and I don't think it came from Councilmember Kellum, from everything I saw. And so I share the same question with you, Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim Brown. I don't know where that came from. And I don't know who who generated that and if we listen to the city attorney, if they were just getting prepared for us to take action if we needed it, I don't think that was necessary, I do appreciate it, but I think the optics of rescind beach parking can um, you know, generate some emotion in the community, so I get it. And with that, that's all I'm gonna say on on that side, we can come back to the positions and and where we are on it, but um, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Raymond.
Good evening. I'd like to first thank the staff and Anthony for preparing this. And I think that it is time to talk. I prefer talking in the present, not in the past. What happened in the past really isn't important. It's what we decide now, so I would rather talk about the present. I happen to live on the west side of A one A and I cross A one A every day. I am one of the proponents of keeping the beach open and I have been from day one. Tom Morley will will say, yes, this is absolutely true. I think that the beach is a good place for us to go to, to exercise, to fish, to jog, to bike ride, and I use the beach frequently. I also think it's good for your spirit. I think a lot of people have been down and depressed. There has been a a rise in domestic abuse. And I know this for a fact, I have seen this because of my work with the serving of the ministry of our Savior, Saint Vincent de Paul. So, as I said, I feel that the beach is a peaceful place for us to go. As of today, we have three hundred and sixty cases of COVID nineteen in Brevard County. We have thirty-eight thousand about, please do not uh, contest one or two. We have thirty-eight thousand cases in our state. That's more than North Korea. We've heard that North Korea has a terrible health system and we are supposed to have one of the best health systems in our country. I think we have a pretty decent one in our state. However, we were not prepared. As you know, some of our people from Rockledge Regional Hospital went to the bad areas up near New Jersey, New York, Connecticut. And they have been trained now to take care of COVID nineteen patients that are back. They will tell you about the horror that they have seen there, about the people dying every day there. It's a horrible thing, we've all seen the coffins, we've seen the black body bags. We need to understand that this virus is like nothing that we have ever seen in our lives. I'm not one to panic. I'm not one to go around with gloves and a mask all the time. As I said, I've been out playing tennis, I ride my bike, I go to the beach. However, thank God I've been safe. And I think we're blessed here since we only have two cases. And that's my point, I wanna keep it that way. I think that no other agenda is more important than our residents' health and safety. And that is our job as elected officials to make sure that our residents are kept safe in this pandemic. This is a worldwide crisis. I think that once we get antibody testing, once we get vaccines, and then we can get beyond phase one and two. Our beach is totally different and our city's totally different than Indian Harbor, Satellite Beach, Melbourne Beach, Melbourne. We have no businesses on the beach. We only have condominiums and residential areas. I ride several hours a day in the morning, noon and night. I've done surveillance, I have not seen anybody parking on someone's front lawn, back lawn, whatever. We've been very lucky, people have respected the shuttered beaches. And we haven't had to even tell them not to park there. So I think it's a little different at different ends of the city, I happen to use the Buchanan Beach. And I am glad, if any resident who cannot make it to the beach, I'm glad to drive them to our beach so that they can enjoy the beautiful day that we have in this paradise. We have no bathroom facilities at the ends of most of our beach parking areas and crossovers. That's why a lot of people choose to loo, use Cherry Down Park, Lori Wilson, because they have a bathroom facility. This is important for a lot of beachgoers. They also have children. And with children, a lot of parents feel confident when they can take their children to the beach and there is a lifeguard available. There are no lifeguards available on about two hundred parking spaces that have crossovers to our beaches. I think a lot of people who have been complaining and calling in are non-residents. And I'm sorry about the situation. If they don't like that we don't have parking at Cape Canaveral, they are welcome to use the county parking spaces or Cocoa Beach. And I think a lot of them prefer to go to Cocoa Beach because they can go get a margarita over at Coconuts or one of the local bars. As far as eliminating confusion, I'm sorry, I read the paper and my paper tells me every day what's going on. And we have a big sign up. When we, we had a big sign up that said, beach parking closed on five twenty-eight as you enter. So I don't think people should be confused. The local people will support our local businesses and they have, even during the closures. I had more pizza than I normally have, just because I wanted to support the local businesses and restaurants. If people are confused, they really just need to do more reading and we had so much about the COVID nineteen and about this virus on television, in newspapers, on the internet. I think we're all quite well versed at this point. So no one needs to be confused. If you need more reading material, I'll give it to you. I'd also like to say that we don't need to rush. What exactly is the big hurry about opening these beach parking places? I have no idea what the par, the problem is. Most people are able to walk to the beach. If other people wanna come from out of town and they don't have a place to park, they can take the scat, it's free. It goes right along Ridgewood, it'll drop them right off at the beach, any beach they wanna go to. So, we are open, we've never closed our beach, such as Cocoa Beach did close their beach. And I think that we're doing the right thing, I'm very proud of our city, our city council and our city staff and our city mayor who represents us all over Brevard County. And I just want you to know that Prime Lober, as city commissioner, he was the one opposing vote about the county parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Well, uh, I'll take my turn and I'll answer a few questions that were posed, yes, uh, we needed three votes and I voted to have the meeting to do it, I was hoping to have it next week sometime. And I'll tell you, when, when the mayors first had their first teleconference before all the beach parking and all that took place, we, we were closing our beach. All six ci, cities along the east coast of Brevard County were closing their beach. Melbourne Beach is still closed as far as I know. The other ones, yes, they had soft opening, Cocoa Beach had Cocoa Beach was the hardest stand of all the beaches, other than Melbourne Beach, to keep their beach closed. Ben and I talked about it and Ben was kinda hard on keeping the beach closed, but I guess when the county opened it, which I was hoping they wouldn't do, they did. Then they changed their hours to a soft opening, I guess you would call it a soft opening. Closed it during the hard part of the day. Yes, I, I, I uh, I've seen a lot of violations and I, I noticed some of them and uh, but I didn't see that many people on the beach. And even last weekend was, was to, uh, uh, basically an ordinary door, a day in Cape Canaveral on the beach, two thousand people or whatever, a little bit under or a little bit over, I don't think it was a very right to the point count, but I've been down there several times and I looked at it during the days, very use, very good use some days, some days it wasn't. I went to Cherry Down Park several times, looked half full, sometimes overflowing. So it's just no way to predict who they are, where they're coming from, and I'm thinking they're not Cape Canaveral residents, most of them. I see a lot of people walking that I do know that are residents. I see a lot of people walking that I don't know, even know who they are. Families, kids, people, couples, older folks. Uh, I've, I've only had one email opposed to the closed parking. One, or not an email, a phone call. I have had no emails from anybody on parking. The only emails I got on parking is generated through the city's website, through the, through the ones that the staff sends us. I have talked to a lot of people. I've talked to a lot of the citizens. They wanna keep it closed, but the businesses want it open. Now, my take on the businesses, yeah, I'm all for business, I'll fight for the every businessman in town, but none of them live in the city either. They're all basically out of the city, which I have no problem with that, but they're here with their business in the city and they want the city to open the parking. The ones I've talked to, they want the parking open. So it's kind of a, yeah, they're, they're, they're taxpayers in the city also. But uh, I look at the, the, the death tolls of the, the United States, it's horrendous, it's climbing. New York has even got freezer trucks supposedly for margs. Don't know if you really can believe the media, but that, but that's what they're doing. I, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm right in the middle on this thing and I would really love to I, I, I would like to not rescind the parking, I didn't care for the wording of rescinding, maybe come back at that at a later date, but uh, when the mayors met, we were all talking about the county basically could open their beach if they want, but they weren't gonna open theirs and it was kind of a mixed feeling and, and then it got into when the county did open it. I don't know why everybody stood their ground the way they did, but I was the only mayor that, I was the only mayor out of all the mayors that left the beach open. Everybody else closed their beach. I for one thought it was one of the worst things to do to the citizens. Not caring about whoever comes to town, who they were or where they're from, but I would thought with the beach parking closed and Cherry Down closed, that you weren't gonna have too much of an inflow, which we didn't have. Cause I'd go down on the, I'd go down on Saturdays and Sundays and I looked and the beach had very few people on it for our beach. A normal day, down there's two thousand people on the weekend. When I go down there before, it was like twelve hundred, eight hundred. Real light crowd. So I don't, I don't know, I, I know there's a lot of people, both sides of the fence on this thing um, in the city. And I would uh, I'm gonna, I don't know. I, I gave in to the, to having this meeting, I was, I guess, the third vote to go ahead and, let's hear the council, what we got to say, let's hear the public. Uh, and I would like to maybe come back with another another meeting with some real, real uh, real input, or maybe we'll get enough tonight, I don't know what's out there, according to what I've been seeing on the emails and what's coming into the city, it's kind of a a mixed crowd, you might say. Now, I would like to hear from the public. And before I say what I would like to do later, I'm gonna, I kinda, I had my mind one way and then I got sitting here thinking about all this, reading everything this afternoon, thought about maybe different way, but I, I got some, some other idea, maybe we'll push forward later. But I would like to uh, hear if anybody else has anything to mention before we go into public participation. Cause I do wanna hear who's out there and what who they are and where they're from and what they got to say, cause everybody, everybody's been tuned into this for a week, cause I've been traveling around town a lot and I've been, I've been hearing a lot of different people talk. Um, I've only, I've only had one phone call and then I had one, I'll say late this afternoon, so I've actually only had two phone calls. But I've talked to a lot of the businesses, talked to a lot of people on the street, see people in the restaurants, see people at the store, whatever. And there's been a lot of different opinions on this. Most of the people that are against it that I talked to are people that are living on the beach. And the mess that was made there last week and left behind, wasn't due to there wasn't any garbage receptacles there. There's plenty of garbage receptacles out there. Just that people would throw stuff in and just walk away and leave it later. I for one saw a lady and guy riding a bicycle right on the sidewalk, on the bike path. He handed her a box of cookies that looked like an empty box of cookies. He took the cookie out and ate it and threw it, then just tossed the box over to over. I don't know, these people are, where they're from, where they, you know, and they do that to your beach, so I wanna, I wanna just ask the council if you got anything else you wanna talk about, you wanna bring up another mention? If not, we'll move to public participation. Uh, I'm gonna just run down alphabetically. I see you, Mickey, I mean, uh, Angela. Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to, I don't know if this is the proper time called a question, I think we've had a debate and everybody's put their what their feeling is on this issue and I'd like to go ahead and
No, sir, we wanna hear from public participation first.
Okay, after that, I'd like to call for questions.
Okay. Mr. Kellum?
I would like to wait till after public participation to hear what they have to say before I make another comment.
No other comments, okay.
Not, not at this time.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Morrison?
Yes, I'd like to wait till after public comment, I do have some comments, but I'll wait, thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
I agree that it's time to make a decision. Uh, if we don't make a decision today, perhaps maybe we can reconsider this after our council meeting, during our council meeting, I think it's on the nineteenth. That's the date that I thought that would be more appropriate to discuss this because we're still only in phase one. We're still in the state of emergency in this state. All right, and we're just opening slowly, twenty-five percent at restaurants. So I think that we really need to be extremely cautious at this point, thank you. I'll hear from the public and then comment again, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, we'll go to public participation, Mr. Organizer, Daniel, do you have uh, how many, how many participants do you have on board, sir?
We have a smattering of emails that came in by the deadline through the public comments email and we do have quite a handful of people with their hands raised, uh, would you prefer emails or or raise hands, sir, first? Uh, would you prefer emails or, or raise hands, sir, first?
Uh, let's just do the emails first. Did you, uh, you have them, oh, you got them up on the screen? Okay. Kind of hard to read though. Can everybody read those? Uh, Daniel, do you want to take the honor of reading those or somebody?
I can go ahead and read them, Mayor, if you like.
All right, okay, Mayor, please. Yeah, then we can just listen and
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So they, this email, it came in uh, from a Mr. John Higgins uh, yesterday, um, at three twelve PM. Opening of beach parking, he addresses council members, I understand this will be a topic at tomorrow's meeting. I am opposed to opening the beach parking at this time. It is not necessary for our residents and only invites a big influx of residents from outside the area. We have only two cases of the virus in our city and we want to keep it that way. Please record my opinion, thank you, John Higgins, Solana Lake Condos, Cape Canaveral. Okay, the next one. Um, hold on. Public comments, uh, from a Joel Lebig. And he, uh, street address five twenty-four Jefferson Ave. Public comment statement, the parking should remain closed. That came in today. I don't see what time exactly. Uh, ten thirty-four this morning. Melissa Bass. Eleven oh two AM this morning to council members. I wanted to share with you my thoughts about Cape Canaveral beach parking. I am in favor of keeping city beach parking closed at this time. I believe it is unwise, it is an unwise safety risk to encourage more beach city traffic at this time. I believe the city should wait until after the Crew Dragon Demo two launch to open parking. This would discourage in-person launch watchers in accordance with NASA guidance and give us time to see if the recent phase one loosening of restrictions in our state and county results in a significant rise in COVID nineteen cases, as I understand is a strong possibility. Daily beach walker, I see firsthand that many people are not respecting social distancing criteria, especially on crossovers, and I do not want to see this problem worsen and more people put at risk when we have the power to slow the spread through continued parking closures. We do not have to follow the trend of nearby towns or the county. Let's be confidently cautious now so we can remain part of the solution today and avoid worsening tomorrow's problem. Thank you for your time and effort to advocate for the best interest of the citizens like me, Melissa Bass. The next one is from an email address that I, is RGP H I B. It came in today at eleven twenty-six AM. And from a person named Robin, she didn't leave her address. If a beach, if beach parking lots are open after the meeting tonight, can the city please enforce our city's street parking ban? In Harbor Heights, people will park all around the cul-de-sac and up and down Harbor and Coral on the side of the roads once the beach parking lot is full. This gets especially out of control on the weekends and summer as well as when we have nice days. And with what is going on right now, it is going to get worse as people look for parking. Not only is it a city rule which is posted on signs that the beginning of the neighborhood, as well as multiple signs around the neighborhood, it is also a safety issue. Cars speed up and down the road. People walking or on bikes have to go around cars parked on the side of the roads. And emergency vehicles have a hard time turning around the cul-de-sac or going around the cars parked on the street as our street is not wide. People rarely get tickets or warnings, so they continue to do this, thank you, Robin. Next email is from Beach Girl, came in at eleven thirty-one this morning. This is thought provoking, though someone did take the no beach parking sign down question. How do our ten or so parking spaces affect businesses and restaurants? And I see, I, she's got HH Neighbors, I, I guess that's Harbor Heights. Drive up, unload beach gear and then have to drive home, park their car, walk back to the beach. Cape Canaveral as a whole has maintained a healthy town. Sometimes, sometime we have to take steps to move back or rather forward to our normal lives, baby steps. Will Harbor Heights beach parking affect us more than customers walking around publics without masks? So all that said, open up parking today, I don't know. Maybe for myself, I need to wait a bit more before opening parking, Janice. Um, this came in on, uh, at one fifty-two this, this afternoon from Arvo Ilau. Um, he didn't leave his address or but his public comment is do not open beach parking. The beaches are already, the beaches already have too many people. I try to walk per CDC guidelines daily. However, it's difficult to keep six foot separation now. If you open beach parking, it will be impossible. If you think it's safe, why is the meeting, why is this meeting online? The beach is not safe either. When you agree to meet at City Hall, not online, then it's safe to open. Repeat, why are you not meeting in person if you think it's safe to open parking, it's not? James Westermeyer. His comment came in at two oh three PM. Good afternoon, thank you for taking a minute to read my email and thank you for closing the beach parking when you did. At that time, there were many spring breakers down here on holidays disregarding the social distance between the groups. I live in Harbor Heights neighborhood area. Since be, parking, since parking has been shut down, the sheriff department have been going through the neighborhood to ensure there were no one parked in the public parking. However, the sheriff's department will not do anything with regard to people parking on the street and going to the beach. The beach is open for all to use and enjoy. In a few days, Jetty Park will be open with restriction. The amount of parking in Cape Canaveral is small. By keeping the parking closed will not prevent people from going to the beach. By keeping the parking closed, will encourage people to park illegal as they are doing now. We need to move forward and open beach parking in Cape Canaveral. Along with that, the sheriff should drive around and issue parking tickets for parking illegally. I cannot speak for all of the sheriff, but the sheriff I talked to would not issue tickets, thank you, Jim Westermeyer. Uh, keep parking closed for now, default on the side of caution, this is from Dawn at Foley Island. Came in today at two forty-one. When the city of Cape Canaveral was established in nineteen sixty-three, it was chartered to be a residential community. To that end, no restaurants or hotels were zoned to be on the beaches or the river. So the directive from our original charter was to maintain the community with the residents as the primary interest. Given that, our mayor and our city council don't have to worry about what to do in the current situation. They need to lean to any choice that protects the residents reflecting the original city charter's path. Since there are a lot of unknown variables at the moment, the opinion of the medical community, including the CDC, must be taken seriously. Our community currently is doing well in terms of positive COVID nineteen tests and in overall deaths. We should not open our doors to a floodgate of visitors yet. The notion to open parking should be tabled for at least two weeks, if not a month. This is an easy call, default on the side of caution in the interest of the health of the residents you were elected to care for. At the same time, we should all support our local resident, restaurants and businesses as much as we, as much as we can give the restrictions allowed. They are also part of the community. Extra effort should be put in by every resident to support them, thank you, Dawn Foley. And that's it for the group that was sent via email. A couple came in after the deadline, I can read those, but that's up to, to the council if they want to hear that or not.
Council? I see one head shaking, no? Mickey?
I can't hear you, okay.
Mickey?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Andrew, do you want to read?
Sounds, sounds like a consensus to read them, okay.
Okay.
Um, at four, four forty-eight PM this afternoon, uh, Elizabeth Crockett, two thirty Columbia, Cape Canaveral. Public comment statement, with regards to reopening beach parking, does the city and the Brevard County Sheriff's Office have resources, have manpower to adequately enforce social distancing and crowd sizes?
I can't do that.
The question. And then Arlen DeBlau, his message came in at five thirty-one PM. Recommend not opening beach parking. We do not need out of town people to bring the COVID nineteen virus to our city. Thanks, Arlen DeBlau. And that's it as far as I know. Far as I can tell.
Okay, that was all the emails?
That's all that I, I received in public comments and otherwise.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Daniel, you have people online? You have any hands?
Uh, quite a few, yes, sir. Uh, if it's okay with you, I'll start with Mr. Miller who had his hand raised earlier in the meeting, so I'll start with him.
That was Steve Miller, was it?
Yes. Steve Miller, yes, sir. All right, Mr. Steve Miller, you're on, uh, please state your name and city of residence and you have three minutes.
Steve Miller, um, eighty-six fifty-seven Maple Court, uh, Cape Canaveral.
Where, Maple Court?
So, I apologize for Council Raymond.
Turn your microphones off, just a minute, Mr. Miller, please turn your microphones off. So Mr. Miller can speak, okay, go ahead, Mr. Miller, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I, I want to start out by apologizing for a misunderstanding of procedure earlier and we'll proceed now.
No problem.
My, my first comment is, uh, I believe the city did absolutely the right thing, keeping the beaches open for all the reasons that folks who like that situation have said already, I won't get into that. Uh, I tend to be a, um, a person who references those of greater learning than myself. The CDC has given us some great, uh, guidance, we're in phase one. The main key to each of the phases that Dr. Fauci recommends was to make a change, evaluate the result and then proceed as the result indicates. Um, and so since the city just, I'm, I'm begging pardon, since the state partially opened on May fourth, that's only four days. Uh, I believe that we would be better served by going fourteen days and then perhaps twenty-eight days past that if the results are inconclusive or negative before we make a major change like opening the beach. So I'm deeply opposed to opening the beach at this time. Uh, the rate of infection in Orange County versus that of Brevard County is, um, very large. So while people do come to the beach, and I'm, I'm an active beach user myself, they don't, uh, the number of people who can come here and park willy nilly or whatever is much less than those that would park if all parking was open. The numbers on the beach that I observe are much lower because the parking is closed. I think that a plan is a good idea and I, I would advise that the plan B, go in fourteen day increments and reevaluate. If we create a magnet here by opening, our area is unique. We're kind of isolated in a corner of the beaches. Without that reason for coming out to the beach for the parking, we're going to get less people. The more people around, the faster the virus, uh, spreads. And, and so we want to keep our infections, uh, low. We don't want to see, um, uh, spring type, uh, I'm sorry, spring break type crowd of which, um, Council Raymond, uh, brought up earlier. Not her words, but she, you know, I agree with her comments about delaying the opening. And really, that's all I had to say, let's follow the guidelines, let's follow the science. The longer we, uh, wait, more, uh, care for COVID nineteen will be developed. But right now, we don't need the increased traffic to our city. Thank you and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, Daniel?
Uh, next we have Richard Coat. Mr. Coat, you are on, you have three minutes, please state your name and city of address, thank you.
My name's Richard Coat and we live in Porte del Rio condominiums, we're on the west side of A one A. My wife and I are both handicapped and we find it difficult to make it to the beach because all the handicap spots have been closed as well. It's a well-known fact that this COVID nineteen does not spread easily outside. In fact, it's almost an impossibility. I don't know what parking near the beach would do to increase the threat to our community. I called, uh, your office and the, uh, city manager's office a week or two ago and they told me the reason the parking was closed was because the county said it had to be so. They said as soon as the county release that regulation, then Cape Canaveral would also follow that, uh, that guideline. The Governor DeSantis has made it perfectly clear that it's okay to go to the beach. It is safe to go to the beach. We just need to be smart, we need to get the world back in, in gear or we're, we're just going, might as well just close the doors. So all these businesses are going to fail, people are going to quit coming to the beach, there's plenty other places to go. Uh, it's just, it's, it's time to try to get back to normal. I would rather, I would rather die than to go on living with all the restrictions and all that are, are put on us as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Daniel?
Uh, yes, sir, we have, uh, June Clark with her hand raised. Ms. Clark, you're on, you have three minutes, please state your name and city of residence. Uh, she has just signed out, never mind, uh, we'll go, move on to the next individual. All right, uh, Mr. Jay Petty. You are on, you have three minutes, please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. Good evening and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council for hearing us. Uh, my wife and I traveled Ridgewood this afternoon and we noticed the difference between the, uh, open uh, beach access areas of the county versus the closed of Cape Canaveral. We saw no congestion, we saw very few cars actually at, uh, the open beach access areas. And we just saw a lot of blockades in Cape Canaveral. It seems to me that we've been under enough restriction for long enough to learn as humans how, uh, how well to act toward each other and for ourselves. It seems like to me that personal responsibility is the way to go forward and maybe emphasize that. If we want to restrict parking, If we want to restrict parking in Cape Canaveral, maybe we ought to go back and visit charging for parking except for Cape Canaveral residents. It seems a perfectly logical way to go about it. But this is a country of freedoms, not lack of freedoms. We don't have any laws that say we can't go to beaches, we can't park, we can't do this or whatever. It just seems to me that we should move forward, find a better way to do things, and use tonight to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we have a Ms. Jacqueline Ward. Ms. Ward, you're on. I see yourself muted, but when you unmute yourself, please state your name and city of residence, and you have three minutes. If you could please unmute yourself, ma'am? If it's okay with you, Mayor, I'll move on to the next individual.
If they're not there, go ahead. As long as they're not there, waiting. We'll come back to her.
All right, Don Cross? Mr. Cross, if you could state your name and city of residence, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Hug, and Council members, this is Don Cross. I live in Bayport Condominiums on the west side of A1A. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll state upfront, I am opposed to opening Cape Canaveral City Parking at this point in time. I agree with Councilmember Kellum that at some point, we do have to open up our beautiful beaches and our parking to residents as well as visitors from out of town. However, I feel at this time, the city does not have a solid phased plan to reopen our parking and bring extra visitors here. I concur with Mayor Pro Tem Brown's position that it's too early to open up parking. We don't have a phased plan. We don't have mitigations and requirements in place. And I do believe we're going to bring extra risk to our residents here. Councilmember Raymond, pretty much summed up, I believe, that our number one priority needs to be the safety and security of our residents. And with that said, I listened intently to Councilmembers, Councilmember Morrison's recounting of neighboring beaches and mayors that have opened up their beaches. Yes, they have, and that is great, but if you look at the neighboring beaches, they opened with a phased plan. Just today, Cocoa Beach put out their plan to open up, and there is no less than 10 mitigations or restrictions to opening, one of which are some pretty significant penalties for littering. Mr. Mayor, you obviously have been to Cherry Down Park. My wife and I bike and walk the beach every single day for the last 45 days. I think we have a lot of lessons learned from the last two weekends at Cherry Down when the county opened that park. Number one, they are not following the CDC guidelines. So as a city, we have to figure out how we can implement those CDC guidelines when we open. Number two, the trash. I live right next to Manatee Park. The park is beautiful. It's been open. Everybody enjoys that park. You'll find no less than 12 trash cans in that park right now, three times the normal amount. And as a result, there's no trash on the ground. I recommend when you open the parking, we take that $50,000 that Councilman Kellum said you have in the budget and pay for extra trash receptacles. Secondarily, over at Manatee Park, they shut down the brick and mortar bathroom. They put two porta-potties outside for personnel to use in an emergency. It works perfectly. You don't have people trashing the newly renovated restroom like I personally observed at Cherry Down Park. It's simple. Put a porta-potty at the end of every one of your parking streets when you do reopen. So I'll end it with, I don't concur with opening the parking yet. I think it needs to be a phased plan. I think there needs to be mitigations and requirements as part of the phased plan, everything that I outlined. And in the absence of that, as a city, we're not ready to reopen. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Daniel?
All right, next we have Christopher Cloney. Mr. Cloney, please state your name and city of residence for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Chris Cloney, Cape Canaveral, 550 Jackson Avenue. Excuse me. I'll be brief and simply echo the key concepts voiced by members of the council and the residents that have emailed or called in and their comments. Priority is safety first. This is a time for extreme caution. I'd urge that the council tables reopening of the beach parking until after the launch. That apparently makes sense to NASA, and it makes sense to me as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cloney.
All right. Mr. Tom Frigello. I do apologize if I mispronounce your last name. Mr. Tom, you are on, and you have, please state your name and city of residence for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Tom Frigello, 231 Canaveral Beach Boulevard. First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a tough decision. I'll be brief. After listening, everyone, I tend to agree that we should shut it down for at least another week and then maybe evaluate the situation then. So I thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I see there is a Mr. Kyle Andrews.
It's not Mr.
For the record, you have three minutes, sir.
I'm not a sir, I'm a, I'm a she.
I do apologize.
That's all right. Wes, number one, you need to cut your hair. But anyway, I know most of you all, but I don't know you, Mickey. But anyway, I've been listening to all this, and I'm not sure that any of us know what is right and what is wrong. Seriously. What I hear coming through is, it's not the time to open. I don't know. But I think people are going to go there anyway. And especially on the 27th of this month, when the rock, when the space goes up, you know, you can't do anything about it. I would defer your, right now, I would say, I think you're both right, and I think you're both wrong. But I would defer it for a couple of weeks because we've been through this thing since March, and it's like it changes every day. So I don't know. I don't know. But anyway. Also, I worry about the litter. I've seen on social media, and I know Wes has seen this same stuff too, but, you know, the trash comes in from the, they call them the what, the inlanders? Or the inlands from people that come from Orlando? And I don't know. It, you know, people just aren't good about that kind of stuff. So it, and Mike said something about, I believe, about there's, there's the city doesn't have the resources to do the trash bins and do all that stuff. I think we need to do that if you're going to open the beaches. I think you have to have the resources to clean out that trash and and make it, make it, make it nice. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Daniel?
All right, we have Angela Green. Angela, you're on. You have three minutes. Please state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Okay, I'm Angela from Roseland Avenue, and I agree with most of the people.
Angela Green, 7803 Roseland Avenue.
All right, was I to say that? Anyway, I'm against opening the beach for now. I've seen a lot of people come in crowds. I stand outside and I see big crowds walking there, and I'm like, I don't see any social distancing. And knowing that this community has more vulnerable people of the older brackets. And on top of that, not saying in an individual way, like being like a single mom, I'm married, but my husband being deployed away. I imagine if I get this virus, what's going to happen to my kids? You know, what am I going to do? So being, I'll admit I'm a bit paranoid of the beach opening because we don't know if people are coming from outside. You don't know they're going to bring the virus to them. We just don't know. So I'm proud of Cape Canaveral being closed down for now. And, well, I'll say, let's wait and see. That's all I have to say. Let's wait. Good, I know people want the opening, but do the two weeks, the month, let's just wait and see. That's just my view.
Thank you.
We have Don Willis. Don, you're on. You have three minutes. Please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Name is Don Willis. I live in Porta Del Rio Condominiums on the west side of Cape Canaveral. I appreciate you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for hearing us out this evening. Personally, I would like to see the parking opened. But having said that, I think it would behoove the city to develop a plan to have some definitive action in place by the next city council meeting, something that you can definitely present to the city and vote on yourselves and get behind. We're already opening restaurants to 25% capacity, so more people are going to be coming out. But I think the next board meeting in, what, a week and a half would be an appropriate time to present a plan, vote on it, implement it, and move forward. Whatever the city feels is appropriate, whatever staff feels would be appropriate to do. And by that time, we will have some more answers on how this is shaking out for our city and our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willis.
We have Tarif Zahowski. Tarif, you're on. You have three minutes. Please state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
My husband and I live at 425 Buchanan on the beach. We have seen more trash when they have the parking open. We do not have enough trash cans here. We would, we are opposed to the parking reopening. It also infringes on our parking in our own lot as more people come in here, and we have to constantly, you know, take care of trespassers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Daniel?
I am giving the list one last look for any other raised hands. I do not see any other raised hands at this time.
Okay, we'll check back in just a little bit.
I spoke to you in the moment I said it, sorry, Mayor, the moment I said it, Mr. Miller raised his hand again. Mr. Miller already spoke. Shall I unmute him again?
Council? Yes, go ahead. Got a consensus.
All right, Mr. Miller, you're on. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Council, and I won't take three minutes. I didn't use the full three minutes, so in a sense of reclaiming my time, two quick comments. The 27th, sorry, I didn't mean to be funny. The 27th is very important. The launch will draw people regardless of what we do. We don't want to add to that. Ms. Bass, Mrs. Bass, I'm sorry, made a good point on that earlier, and I agree with her completely. Also, in addition to everything that's been discussed tonight, I think we need to have a sign on all the crossovers, as long as we're doing social distancing, to clear the crossovers. Do not congregate on the crossovers. I have been actually ridiculed crossing the crossover when I asked folks to step aside. It's an instant crowd. Those crossovers are not seven feet wide. And that's all my comments, and I appreciate the additional time to speak.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Thank you. Well considered. Council?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I got a message from someone. A citizen, Stuart Smith, is saying that he's trying to raise his hand. Daniel, Mr. Mayor, if you're okay, I don't know if Daniel's seen it. He might be having a technical issue, he said. And that was just a personal text to me. He just threw another outlet to try to get help.
Daniel?
Yes, I'm looking up and down the list. I do not see a Stuart Smith listed in the list of attendees at this time.
Hey, thank you. That's, I guess that's all we can do at this point. Thank you.
Is there a way to call in? Excuse me.
Let me, let me, hold on just a minute, folks. Daniel? Daniel?
Sir.
Is there any way that this gentleman can text you or call you? Or is the only way you can connect with him is through that means?
That would be, that would be almost a logistical impossibility off the cuff like this on the fly, unfortunately.
Okay, okay, well, we want to give everybody the opportunity that's out there. I see a hand raised, Mickey, I mean Angela, I'm sorry. I was looking at.
Jackie, Daniel, Jackie Ward was trying to speak earlier, and she didn't get to. I was wondering if she's able to speak again. She didn't get, you tried to get her to speak. Is she still on, and would she like to speak?
I do not see a Jacqueline Ward on the list anymore. She was on earlier, but not at this moment.
All right, she must have gone away. Okay, I just wanted to check to make sure. Thank you.
I think she did sign off. He was trying to.
Thank you.
Okay, give her one more rundown, Daniel, please, just so we're sure.
As I've been going up and down the list, I have seen one hand blinking, but it blinks away before I can actually see which name it is. So someone is clicking the button repeatedly, and I'm not quite sure who it is, unfortunately.
Maybe they're out there and they can hear you saying that. Just click it one time, and you should be good. It's still blinking?
It's Michael Corrigan. Give me one moment. Michael, you're on. You have three minutes. Please state your name and city of residence.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
It is permitted.
Excellent. My name is Uncle Corrigan. I live across the street from the City Hall. And I am disabled. I'm 74 years old. I'm still working. I resent the fact that I'm unable to go to the beach because there is no handicap parking. I, it's beyond my comprehension how you think that restricting access to open areas is a detriment. New York Today just found out that 65% of the people that are positive for coronavirus have been quarantined. We need to open up. We need to have, we need to be able to get out, and it's time to open the city up. We have two cases in 10,000 people in Cape Canaveral. We do not have a problem here. And I'm sorry, there's a lot of trash out there, but that's an ancillary issue. It's about the beach and access. I don't have it. I have a disability. I need handicap parking. And the gentleman that was talking about the bridges with people standing on them is very correct that there are people that are not social distancing, and that's what's important. Now, I think the hair salons and the barber shops should also be open. People are wearing masks. They're being responsible, and it's showing the positive effect here in Cape Canaveral. So I think people are overly paranoid, and if the proper cautions are taken, we can use the So I think people are overly paranoid and if the proper cautions are taken, we can use the open air facilities without problems. We should be out. It's time to lift it. Thank you very much for your time.
Is that it, Daniel?
Uh, Don Willis has raised his hand again. He already spoke. Uh, may I unmute him?
Uh, counsel's shaking their head yes, so I guess go ahead. Let's hear everybody. Give everybody their fair chance.
All right, uh, Don, uh, you're unmuted. I see yourself muted at the moment, but if you wish to speak, please unmute yourself.
Um, I think my beer bottle just hit the mute button. I was, uh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to eat better. And, uh, I think the fork raised my hand and not me. I apologize.
That's all right. Enjoy your beer. Okay, I think we probably gave everybody a fair chance. Daniel, I'll just tell you, we, we will come back one last time after we discuss and we'll see before we get a motion. Okay?
No hands at this time, so we're good to go.
Okay, sir. We'll close public participation, bring it to the council and just alert us if you do get a hand before we go do anything. Now we'll listen again. I want to give everybody their fair share of talking. All right, we'll go back to counsel and, uh, Mr. Brown. Has anybody got a comment other than a motion? Everybody just, we'll, we'll go for comments again. I know everybody heard the public and you got kind of a mixed, mixed public out here.
Okay, mayor, you ready?
Just for comments, if you got comments or?
Okay. Okay, mayor, I just want to say I, I appreciate the input of our, our citizens. I still believe it's too early. We need to err on the side of caution. We can come up, we can come up with a plan at the next city council meeting or get the council members to go ahead and submit something prior to the meeting. I, I want to say that maybe there's something we can work out as far as handicap parking because, um, since they don't have access, access, excuse me, but like a lot of citizens, citizens, I'm just gonna reiterate, it's too early to open up the parking and that's where I want to go ahead and end my discussion.
Okay. Ms. Callum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you to everyone that called in and emailed. It's great to have, uh, public participation and insight on where, where our citizens are, are coming from. I have a few, um, questions. Uh, I would like to ask, uh, Ms. Raymond, um, uh, you know, you said there's no parking on the streets that you've seen. Have, have you talked to Commander Walters at all? I can't hear you.
I've talked to Commander Walters. It seems as though we, that we've got two different issues. We have an issue with parking on the streets, which is no parking on the streets. And the other issue is police enforcement, which seems to be the problem. So I don't think we should mix those two things together.
I, I'm saying that people are parking on the street because they can't park at the end of the street. And he told me when I talked to them.
You don't have much of that. I don't, I haven't seen that whatsoever.
Could I finish, please?
Oh, okay. I thought you were asking me a question. Thank you.
He said that in one day he gave out 25 to 30 tickets in the Cape U area with people parking on the street because there was no place for him, them to park or they could not park at Cherry Down Park because it was full. And the Washington Avenue next to it was blocked off. So, and, and as far as, um, local businesses here, I, I understand we have to take care of the residents. I agree 100%. Uh, but the businesses in our little city cannot survive on just local businesses. They need our visitors to come. The salons, my, my daughter is a beautician. The salons are opening on Monday. Um, there's, and as far as the comments that you said earlier, and I'm not picking on you, I'm just trying to get a conversation. That most of these people that want the beaches open aren't from the city. Well, all the comments that we got were residents. All the emails we got were residents. Um, I just, I think that one of the comments from the gentleman, I didn't catch his name about it's time for us to open and be adults and social distance ourselves. And, uh, you, you know, you can't govern everything. And I, I just think it's time for us, if you don't want to go, if you are afraid of catching it, if you don't want to go to the beach, stay home. Don't go out. Wait two more weeks. But the other people that want to go out and want to enjoy it and want to park, like the people from Porta Del Rio that commented, that they would like to drive across A1A and go park at their beach and take a walk. Um, I, the 216 parking spaces that we're talking about is not going to bring an influx of COVID-19 in 216 spaces. I also, I, you know, Melissa Bass, her idea on waiting after the, um, the launch. These people are gonna come whether we open the parking lots or not. And it's gonna be crazy and it's gonna be more har- harder on the police force or the sheriff's department. When they could be spending time doing anything, trying to police and arguing with people about parking. Commander Walters also told me that the tickets they gave, there was two or 300 people that they didn't ticket, that they talked to and they kindly moved their cars. That's resource and time taken away from the sheriffs on 216 parking spaces. Where we, if we opened it, if they would, could maybe enforce the parking on the street better and do other things besides trying to talk to people. Because we don't want people to come here and residents to come here and when they park on the side, we give them a ticket. So they talked to them and, and they agreed to move their car, but that's 200 to 300, say it's 15 minutes apiece. How much time is that taking away from the officers that are protecting us in our city? That's my point. And, and then, you know, I talked to people in the last week when I, I couldn't get anyone to agree to meet. I, I went out and talked to the citizens and said, you know, what's your thoughts on this? I can't even get the council to talk about it. And then people told me horror stories about people running across A1A with their kids because they parked there to walk to the beach. Another lady moved the barricades, took her kids, dropped them off at the beach entrance, little kids, and drove away and looking for a parking space. Anything could happen to those kids at that time. And I think, you know, the hype and, uh, you know, COVID-19 is horrible. It's awful. But I think we have to outweigh public safety for residents against 216 parking spaces. And how do you get COVID-19 parking your car? I think that, um, you know, the city has the resources to ramp up, you know, sanitizing at the beach ends, more trash cans, more education on social distancing. Let people go outside. And again, you know, I'm for opening up and letting people choose. If you don't want to go, don't go. Um, the other thing is, um, you know, everything that, all the comments that we've heard from the citizens, both email and on, on the telephone or on the e, uh, internet. All these people in the phases of opening that they're talking about, which I agree 100%. This was all things that I wanted to talk to coun- to council about on April 2nd. And again, no one wanted to meet. And I know nobody wants to talk about what happened in the past. But we as leaders needed a plan from the get-go and we didn't have one. And, um, you know, that really upsets me and, and it makes me feel like, you know, are we doing our job as a council? Um, the only other thing I have is, um, I think that's it. Uh, you know, sometimes this is a decision that's, you know, it's gonna be wrong one way or the other. But, you know, sometimes you have to make hard decisions and this is one of them. Thank you.
Mr. Mars?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanted to kind of sit back and hear it and we got over 20 something comments, which I agree 100% with Councilmember Callum. This is the exact reason why we want to have a meeting and we do have to look at the past. Absolutely. We learn and what I'm learning is that, um, Councilmember Raymond, when you say that you're, you're reading the paper and, uh, I think I would highly recommend putting the paper down and going, talking to Commander Walters. Cause I spoke to him yesterday for 30 minutes and I can tell that you have not spoken to him recently. And I don't know if, if anyone in here, I think sounds like Councilmember Callum has, and that's okay. But if you called him right now and if, if he's on here tonight, I would love for him to comment and to weigh in. Because his opinion is exactly what Councilmember Callum's saying. And Mr. Mayor, I know you said you're on the fence. So I'm, I'm really talking to you right now because Mayor Pro Tim Brown's made it clear that he won't even consider this. Unless he's willing to change his mind, I'll talk to you too, Mayor Pro Tim Brown. And, uh, we didn't want to meet. This is not an easy decision. No one's taking COVID-19 lightly. And in fact, the, the ones who are, who, who should take it seriously are the New York Cities and the Miamis, but that's not us. Statistically, we are at two positive cases. And I pray that those two people are healthy, which means we've got no one in this city right now with, with any positive cases. The point is, is there's zero deaths here that we know about in this city. And to say safety first, amen. I'm for safety and, but I'm also for liberty. And we can, we can say that safety i- is important, but get protecting people's safety is one thing, but I'm here to protect people's liberties too. And you heard tonight at least two to three handicap, and we got an email earlier from a handicap veteran who says, I can't go to my own city, the city that I pay taxes in and go to the beach. I was happy to hear Mayor Pro Tim Brown say that and I think we can all hear. There's the first problem. The next problem is, thank you very much to our interim city manager and whoever's a part of getting the spaces. We've got a couple hundred spaces. Those folks are coming. It comes down to, and you heard it, the silver lining tonight for the people that I think getting it, we have complimented the citizens of Cape Canaveral. Remember, do not forget that Cape Canaveral was be- being criticized for the only ones that kept our beaches open. Remember when everyone else was closing their beaches and Cape Canaveral stayed open? I was proud of this council. I was proud of our mayor and I'm still proud of you today and for that decision. And the scare was, I got the emails, I got the calls that, oh my gosh, you know, this is going to spiral out of control. This is a mistake. And we stood firm, did front on this council. And look what happened. We were okay. And there's people, I walk that beach almost every single day. And I am out there and I take photos and I see it. I see what's happening. And if you talk to our deputies and if you talk to our commander who said, Wes, we are ready. He's got the resources. He says, I can keep writing tickets all day long. He said, we got the resources to do that, but he would rather be out on that beach educating the citizens that we've all said, we're very proud of our citizens for respecting social distancing. That's what it comes down to. And to say that our city isn't ready to the items that you listed, Mayor Pro Tim Brown, that he, that, that, that we weren't ready in, in the opening were things like the rails, the bike racks, the crossovers. We have a $12 million budget. We are 20, you know, just around, you know, maybe under $20 million in debt and we can't afford sanitizers? I know for a fact that our interim city manager and the staff are ready. I, I, it would be an insult for me to even ask him, are you ready to sanitize our bike path, our, our, our bike, bike racks, our crossovers? Of course we're ready for that. And yes, we got a $50,000, uh, uh, limit, but it can even go higher than that. That's just what the city manager has. And we're not even close to that. Last time I checked, we were well under spending that. We bought hazmat suits. We bought all types of stuff to get prepared and I guarantee you, we got hand sanitizer. We had a gracious donation from a local business who donated 4,000 sanitizers to this whole community and there's more. We've had face masks donated to us, but I want you to just think in your second, uh, here for a second, when all of the arguments, and I respect all of them, that say, hey, we only have two cases and we want to keep it that way. I'm, I don't understand how keeping the beach parking closed is going to create this big concern. Of course I can run in, let me, let me explain that. Why? Of course I get the fact that people, more people may come here. But just let's take an extreme example for a second. 215 car spaces. Just say every single one of those people were from a county that had a very high rate, every single one of them. They all go out to the beach. They're all not respecting social distancing. On that beach in the hot sun and the breeze, they walk back. Where are, I'm gonna just call them hotspots. Where are the hotspots where people are going to be spreading the virus? It's a thousand foot of beach space out there and we, we have enough room to spread out. And that was our stance and our city attorney brought up a very good point. Just, it was just his opinion and perspective on it and I agreed with it. If we closed the beaches at one point, then that puts all the people on the sidewalks. We kept them open and there's plenty of room out there for people to, to spread out. But just take those people, if they go out to the beach, everyone's from Orlando and that just, even if they, they had the virus, they come back and they touch the boardwalks. Where else do they go? Most, a lot of people say they don't even spend money here in our city. They just go back to Orlando. Well, then they get their cars and they leave. So where, where's the concern there with the virus? This is an extreme example, but I think it's important. Now say that person stops and gets gas. Gas pumps, that's a hotspot. The restroom door handle's a hotspot. And then the restaurants are obviously hotspots where they sit and eat. Hotels certainly. The governor and thank you, Kyle Andrews, for your comment on my haircut. This is clearly showing that I have not, uh, taken advantage of it. Uh, but what's gonna happen Monday is the governor is opening up barbers and salons this Monday. And Cape Canaveral is still gonna have our beach parking closed? It was a really risky choice to keep the beaches open and then close the parking. That's the confusion. And if you talk to Commander Walters, that is taking up a lot of their time and they're writing tickets. They wrote, yeah, 30 to 40 tickets, lot of warning, lot of educating. When he could be out there talking to citizens. To think that Todd doesn't have the plan, and I just saw the draft plan come out today and I was very impressed with it. To, to sanitize these hotspots, beach crossovers, that, that those people in that extreme example, when they come across the beach walks, whatever they're touching can be sanitized, but that's not the case. The majority of people statistically do not have this virus. The case is everyone out of the beach aren't from other counties. In fact, this isn't just about Cape Canaveral. I think the majority of the people are from Cape Canaveral out there. And I think that the rest of the majority are from our neighboring with inter-county cities, Titusville, Merritt Island, Cocoa, and our county is statistically low. And so the governor's been clear, open up, get people outside, open our playgrounds, open our parks. And what it's doing is Cherry Down Park's open and that's why trash is piling up. Don't, are we gonna really say, hey, we got a trash problem, so let's keep parking closed? No. And I see those people, mayor, throwing stuff out and it wouldn't shock me if it was locals doing it. And I see those people, Mayor, throwing stuff out and wouldn't shock me if it was locals doing it. But a trash problem is something that I'm, again, confident that that Todd and his team will be able to go and address. But that's different than this and so what I'm hoping. Is that we really stop listening to the hysteria of, I think. A lot of the media in New York City is absolutely scary. Miami is scary, I get that. But here, you can't create a headline for the city of Cape Canaveral. I haven't seen one that that is majorly concerning. And so what I hope. Is that we seriously, and if Commander Walters is on here. And if if Todd disagrees, they are ready to go. To say we're not prepared tomorrow, they are ready to go. And the whole, the launched flight with the main flight, I respect that. That's a valid point. But to say we've got to wait all the way to that point, no, we can make a decision on that day. To close it or limit it or restrain it, but to go this whole time, I don't, I don't think that's the case. The data. Uh, Councilmember Raymond, it's nice that you want to give people car rides. I don't think that's a CDC guideline recommended thing to do. People should have the liberty to go to their own beach. We have citizens in Cape Canaveral who live on the other side of A one A. Who can't go to their own beach that they pay taxes for. We have handicapped, we have veterans. And we, unfortunately, I live close enough to walk, but if I had a mobility challenge, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, see, I'll wrap up. If I have a mobility challenge, I I wouldn't, I would be furious right now. And I think that we are ready unless the city manager or Commander Walters disagrees and and I spoke to him again yesterday. So all of the arguments for it to say, I just, I'm not seeing it. And I'm not listening to the Florida today. I'm listening to the person who runs this two square mile city's law enforcement. And that's the person that I'm gonna go with and trust and listen to. I'm listening to our city manager who's sharing us data. That says the citizens actually are starting to wanting it open. I'm looking at the data that Stephanie just shared saying overwhelming majority is actually saying it's open. And there is a way to do this right. And so I think that we seriously need to consider this, to say dr- dr- for two weeks, it doesn't make sense. And the last thing, I just want to end on this. We are completely ignoring. The 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 statement, I agree with Councilmember Callum, that these local residents can support businesses. Is just not true. Yes, theoretically, I guess if everyone went out every day, but that doesn't happen. Those businesses. Depend on people coming from other look communities and those people playing beach days and if we're washing our hands. And if we're putting on our face masks and like Councilmember Callum said, if you're, if you're staying six foot away. Then we're gonna be okay, but these businesses have now, who depend on beach parking and the residents. Businesses have already closed their doors in Cape Canaveral. People are losing their jobs in Cape Canaveral. People's incomes are being highly. Uh, reduced in Cape Canaveral and the curve that's gonna start to go up, that we need to start pressing down. Is job loss and cannot income loss and damage. And 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 I hope it doesn't get to that point, but we are ready to open. And we're ready to turn it off. If it's a mistake, we could turn it off just as fast, but I do not see any data that shows that we got a mistake. There's no reason to quote New York City or Miami on what's happened in this city. Our sheriffs are ready, our deputies are ready, our city managers ready. And you can clearly see that we should have had this discussion because we had the most public comments I've seen in a long time. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Let's uh, let's go to Mr. Brown and then is anybody else? Gonna comment?
Well, I called, I I called for a question a while ago, um, Mayor, and um, I think everybody's had their say in this debate.
I want to go back through because I I'm doing it for a reason. Go ahead, Angela.
I can say it very quickly. Uh, I don't need fifteen minutes. Anyway, what I'd like to say is, for our handicap people, I do feel concerned. However, Michael Corrigan, I would like you to use Cherry Down Park. I'm sure that that you can get into Cherry Down Park if you go. And there are plenty of times when there are parking spaces available. Hopefully, the handicap would be open for you. I think it's a good idea. I and beach, you can just look at my tan. And I go to the beach a lot. I'm outdoors constantly, riding my bike, playing tennis, going to the beach. My tan tells you that I am. I'd also like to say, the city does have a plan. Melinda Hugheser, I ta- had a long conversation with her last week, giving her my ideas on how we can open the city. And there's a wonderful plan and I read through the whole thing. I'm very impressed. Thank you, Melinda. And thank you for the rest of the staff for coming up with all of these good ideas. I know Zach I calls has been involved in this. So we do have a plan and I think we need to tell our city residents that and I will second. I will second the question, Mike. Thank you.
Okay, Angela, I mean, uh, Mickey, did you have any last comment? You had your hand up. Go ahead. You're not on, you.
I called for a question, Mayor.
Um, and I I seconded it. I seconded it. Thank you.
I would like to, I would like to give everybody their opportunity to finish and this is the last time. This is it. No more question. Then we'll go back to a question. I want to comment yet, but before, before everybody gets a comment, we should get comments, no questions.
Uh, I would like to, can I ask Anthony a question? Is Anthony still in?
Anthony?
Of course, I'm here.
Okay, um, on one of the emails we got, Anthony, it said, um, and it is from a Vietnam veteran who is disabled, who can't get to the beach. And he said, if we don't rescind this, that he could um. File a lawsuit about against the city of Cape Canaveral. Is that something that could happen?
I think that's an issue that um, can be addressed. The certain, the city can make um, a reasonable accommodation. Uh, for for um, anyone that's disabled to access uh, the beach. Um, it's just something that would have to just be worked out. Um, also, Jetty, uh, not Jetty Park, but um. Uh, Cherry Down Park is is currently open and available with 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 parking spaces, including han- uh, handicap parking spaces.
Okay, so and then Todd is on?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Todd, how many handicap parking spaces do we have in the city on the beach ends?
Believe there's one at each, so that would be seventeen.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
And the three, uh, uh, there's three accessible uh, handicap uh, crossovers, correct? Are we, we're trying to lower them as we go, I know, but I know there's three that's accessible. Buchanan, Madison and.
Yes, Mayor, and and to Anthony's point, if if the resident would like to contact staff, we will find a reasonable accommodation that meets his needs.
Okay, um, I I'm gonna make some last comments and then we're gonna. Go for a motion. I I've. Heard a lot of. Or I've heard a lot against and I, I look at the tally, it's like. Sixty percent against closing it and forty percent or keeping it open. But we haven't really heard everybody, so uh, I'm gonna ask staff a couple of things and then we'll go for a motion. If you can just hold back, I'd like to get a couple of answers for. Cause I'm, I'm, I'm really not a hundred percent decided. Uh. I know Mr. Andrews is thing and I know the police probably have been overwhelmed with stuff that's happened up there. But I think that we, i- if the beach does need a little more attention as far as those crossovers. Cause I've seen five and six guys standing on the crossover talking right on the end of Jefferson. I'm not gonna go up and be the cop, so and I've seen it at other places. I've seen. Close proximity, people standing together in groups. On the beach. I've seen people walking on the street, holding hands, arms around each other. That's not social distancing. But I think those people are more or less families. They're members of each other's family. I can understand. I put marble on my wife. I don't stay six feet away from my wife, but there's. There are things that we can do out there on that beach to make it a little better for the safety of these citizens. And I've, I've been a a real proponent of safety for the people out there with the sheriff's office and I think. They need to be out there continually looking at what's going on out there. Um, I'm gonna ask Mr. Morley. Uh, Todd, you're on?
Yes, sir, I am.
You're on. At what fact, or what time in the city, uh, I'm hearing that the city is prepared to open the gates. Are we, are we ready to let this happen and? Do we have the personnel to sanitize and do all the things that I'm hearing that wants to be done? I know for a fact they need more garbage cans out there. Are we gonna have uh, the uh. Waste Pro Company bring more cans out? Um, and I also heard portable parlits was a good idea. Um. I know people go to the beach and there's a lot of, lot goes on on the beach that we don't know about that shouldn't happen. And I'm, I'm looking at these things. As far as safety, that to me is more important than the virus because. People, I don't pe- I don't think people. As many people as are led to believe have the virus from what I'm seeing. Uh, I had an aunt just passed away in St. Louis from it, but I don't think she died more of a heart attack than anything else, but. Everything's cor- coronavirus if you die. But I I'm looking at uh. Yeah, I I was the one that steadfast on keeping it closed. I took a lot of heat from all the mayors. I I uh, kept it open. The cities and the city was an open city. But it did bring on a lot of problems. It brought a lot of problems with all these people coming to park. I see it every day. But I want to know, Todd, at what time, I know you've got your action plan. At what time are we ready to implement that plan?
Well, we can have the barricades removed by nine AM tomorrow. That's the the consensus of the council. Um, the UV GI disinfection unit is on order. It hasn't been received yet. Uh, we hadn't really con- contemplated a mass cleaning of of beach crossovers at this point, but something we're gonna have to. Uh, get back to you on with an answer. And uh, what was the other question, sir?
Just to basically, when, when are we gonna be one hundred percent ready to put your action, action plan into place?
Well, if the council's desire is to have a a disinfection of the crossovers. Staff needs to regroup on that and figure out what's gonna be required. We're definitely not ready for that come tomorrow if that's the goal. So we need to clarify that and then we'll get some data back to the council.
But uh, do you have a kind of given time as when that actually can take place?
I I I would say that the unit that we're expecting is gonna be here within two weeks, but I'm not sure that it's meant for an outdoor application like that.
And of course, I'm sure there'll be some training.
Yes.
Okay, that's. Um. I don't really have any other questions other than, you know, I don't know, uh, I'm not a scientist, I'm not a doctor, I don't think any of us are to kind of make any. Any real calls on what's gonna be happening with this, but. I I for one, I told the mayors when we had our conference, the beach is the best place to be. You can't ask for a better place to be. But you don't need all this congregation down there. We don't need four and five people standing on the crossovers. We don't need people parking all over the street like we have. I guess Harbor Heights is a real issue. I went up there. I went up there, uh, I don't know if it was Saturday or Sunday and I made a roundabout up in there and I didn't, I didn't see any cars, but there was people walking to the beach. I don't know where they parked, but there were some people walking on the street, going to the beach. So I I don't know, uh, but uh. I'm gonna go ahead and go back down one time. We'll start on this end. Mickey, you got your hand waving and then we'll go for the, go for it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, just a couple of questions. Um, the walkover, the crossovers mostly are wood. We couldn't clean them anyway. Is that right, Todd?
Uh, not true.
They can be pressure cleaned, absolutely. As far as the UV disinfection, that's the thing I want to look into and get back to you on.
Okay, and the machine that you said is two weeks out, what, could you tell us what that is about?
Um, I think if Melinda's on, she can probably explain that better than I am, but it's something that we've ordered for city facilities and and vehicles. Melinda, are you on?
Yes, Todd, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and City Manager. The UV light is a light that hospitals and larger organizations, it it, including schools have been utilizing. It kills ninety-nine point nine percent of viruses, molds, bacteria. And it's actually quite amazing what it can do. It's usually used indoors and we can use it inside city vehicles. And it basically disinfects at a very, very high level. Now, um, me and Zach have been doing research in reference to the crossovers. We can treat the crossovers like what Gustavo does with leisure services parks, where he has an infectant that he sprays on it. A and B, believe it or not, Sunlight has UV in it and it is a natural killer. So sunlight, especially at the beach, is our number one thing happening. So I hope that clarifies your question, City Manager.
Thank you. Um, and then you're quite, what you brought up, Mr. Mayor, about Harbor Heights and and other areas. Um, people were parking in La Cantina Restaurant. And walking through Harbor Heights, which now puts the burden of the parking on the businesses. They, they already have enough problems with twenty-five percent seating. And now we have people going to the beach, not even coming into their restaurant, parking in their parking. And it's up to the businesses to now have them ticketed or towed or both, which puts another burden on the local businesses. The same with Fanny's Chicken, the same with uh, other um, other businesses down on A one A. People were parking there and walking to the beach after they left their kids. This one lady at the beach crossover by themselves and went to find a parking spot. Which I think is way more dangerous than the chance of catching COVID nineteen in a parking spot. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that does it. I'm uh, I'm gonna go back one time and check for. The hands again, Mickey, I mean, uh, Angela, I'm sorry.
I just would like to say, um, I think we need to present this properly. The emails and the comments that we had from people were overwhelmingly. Overwhelmingly in favor of keeping the parking shutter. There were a few who said no, but I mean, I counted. I just went through, counted and I took notes. So I, I think overwhelmingly, our residents are saying, keep it a little bit more. Wait and see, maybe by the time we have our council meeting, we can talk about this again and make an informed decision. Thank you. I want to err on the side of caution. Thank you.
The count is thirteen to keep it closed. The count to keep it open was six and you had two undecided at all of them, out of the twenty. I kept count two, big, or Angela.
I second that, Mr. Mayor. Me, I I I have the same numbers.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna go back to Daniel one time, Daniel, and make sure we haven't got anybody that was trying to get in. But if you got somebody, Daniel, we're gonna go.
A lot more.
I do not see any raised hands at this moment, sir.
Okay, we're gonna close public comment for the night and we're coming back to the council. Council, it's up to you.
But Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, um. Just to final, that your comment on the getting it, the crossovers. Um, I've just got some tech people who are tuned in and saying the crossovers is act exactly Melinda said. The sunshine, just the heat of them, those are not a ma- uh, concern. Um, but and then also remember self-responsibility. That how we, Canaveral citizens do not touch crossovers. I tell my daughter all the time, act like coronavirus is everywhere. What are you gonna do with your hands? And if now imagine that you touch it, what are you gonna do with your hands? Don't touch your face. And so I think this citizens, that's, she's a, a young girl. I think that uh, citizens can conduct themselves the same way. Mr. Mayor, you brought up an excellent point about um, people at the crossovers congregating. I do think that's. Because it's kind of hard to social distance there, especially where we have those cutouts. because it's kinda hard to social distance there, especially where we have those cutouts. But this is exactly what Commander Walters, uh, i- is, is able to do. Because he's out writing thirty-five dollar tickets bec- and the reason they're parking on the streets is because there are no beach parking available. And so if he can get off the streets, he can now re-target. As they say, he says, we've been targeting. He's not out on A1A as much, you know, with tickets. He's not out in these other areas. He says, we've been focusing on Ridgewood. But now, if we can get him to focus on what you said, which I think is a good idea, on these crossovers, and we've got, I think, we're able to, to focus on that bottleneck. Um, that way, Todd sound like he had everything else that he needs. And if Commander Walters is on here and it's your will, Mayor, having him speak would be wonderful, cuz I think it would be very eye-opening for the rest of the council. And that's it. That's my final, final comments. I just think that we are, um, we are ready. And we have to, uh, make a decision, I think, in, uh, tomorrow. Um, I know that it's going to be clear and simple to, to clear up the, uh, barricades. Make it, create legal parking. Open up the legal parking spaces. That's what we need to do. Let's open up our legal parking spaces, relieve the, the congestion and focus in the right way. I hope, uh, I will not be voting in favor of the motion that I heard, um, earlier to table and, and, and I hope that we move in the right direction. So thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I asked for a question.
I had, okay. I haven't had, I haven't had much say at the end of this thing, but I, I have listened to all the citizens. I have heard thirteen people are in favor of keeping it closed. Six people are in favor of keeping it open. Two are undecided. And I, I kinda look at, yeah, I was, uh, I took a good brow beating from the, from the mayor's meeting when we had it, but I stood my ground on it. But I'm gonna ask, uh, Commander Walters if he's online with us.
Commander Walters is here and I have unmuted him, sir.
Commander Walters, you have heard everything that this council has said, I hope. And, uh, are, are your feelings are that this is gonna be a hindrance to the sheriff's office to keep the beach closed? And not give you ample support to do your other duties in the city?
Oh, I don't know if it's really a hindrance, but we have better things to do with our enforcement time. Um, w- we're dedicating a lot of resources to the parking enforcement.
Okay, but, uh, by opening the parking, uh, my question, basically, maybe you didn't understand how, where I was going with this. By opening the parking, are you gonna be able to spend time on the beach and enforce the distancing? And the groups of ten and twenty or whatever gather down there and keep our crossovers clean and open? Congregating? I know you're down there a lot. I know you're down there all the time, but, no, I see a lot.
You don't hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's sort of like we're stepping on each other, Bear.
Well, I, I kinda walked on you. I think I talked over you. But I was just trying to make a point that, um, I ju- I ju- I just have the problem with, I, I have personally seen many times where people stand on that crossover and gather and stand there drinking. They ain't even supposed to be standing there drinking. Uh, and they're there, so.
All right, is it my floor now?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, I appreciate it. Okay, well, let's look prior to COVID nineteen. And we, we'd had no problems doing traffic enforcement, beach patrols and what we need to do. Um, since all this has started, we've written, we ran a number today, a hundred and twenty-four parking citations. So I do take a little bit of offense if the impression is that we're not doing enforcement and working diligently out there on the beach and then within the city. Have to tell you, uh, Count Congressman, uh, or, or Congressman Raymond, you can go ahead and smile. I, I just wanna point something out is that the men and women of the sheriff's office are working very hard in this city. And you haven't called me to discuss this. Wes Morrison and Mickey Callum have both called me to talk to me in depth about this issue. What I'm saying is that, look at what you're doing with the parking. If you feel so strong about the parking being closed in City Cape Canaveral Beach Axon, why do you open up all of your city property and parking? Libraries are open, city park is open, your city hall is open. People can park in your city hall and walk to the beach. They sure can, and they're doing it. So that's where everybody's going and they're going in your constituents' front yards. We've written parking tickets out in the front streets, uh, uh, on the streets of the, uh, of your constituents. A hundred and twenty-four citations just don't come from Capeview Elementary School. That's throughout the whole city. I'm just saying, you're preventing the inevitable. The people will come. There's no doubt. Your decision to make is obviously split. I can't change your mind about COVID nineteen and what's safe and what's not safe. All I can tell you is that the sheriff's office is standing ready. We're gonna be there to do our jobs. We've been doing that all along. And we can stop. We will check the crossovers. We've been trolling the beaches. And we're doing a darn gone, good job doing it, so. Simple as that.
Hey, Commander Walters, I applaud you and, uh, yes, I know, I see him out there all the time, so. But there are incidents where these people have spoken and seen it and some of the citizens have also. I was just saying that I think those type of things should be addressed. Because the parking, the parking is not a problem. It's just people. So, uh, go on there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let it go and bring it back to the council. If you guys, you're done, we'll do a motion. We'll do whatever you wanna do. Call the question or whatever. But I'm, I'm done. I have, I've heard.
A point of order, Mayor. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Uh, uh, Mr. Brown was trying to make a, make a motion, I believe, but I would like to hear, if we can, from Mr. Garganese, cuz I, I failed to ask him anything that he wanted to put in here before we go, before we close.
Um, just a point of order regarding procedure. Um, there is no mo- substantive motion on the floor, um, regarding the item because it's a discussion item. And if there is any desire by the city council to, uh, adopt the resolution, then a re- the motion to adopt the resolution would be in order. If there is no motion on the resolution and discussion is done, a motion to adjourn would be in order, order because no action is required to be taken by the council. The emergency order prohibiting beach end parking would stand.
Okay, Mr. Brown, Metro Tim Brown, excuse me, I called for the question, but there was no motion or anything.
I, I interpreted the call to question as he was done with discussion on the item. And if there's no further discussion, then the council can either, um, consider the resolution, which was presented just if necessary, or adjourn the meeting and then the emergency order will stand. And beach end parking would be prohibited until otherwise, uh, decided by council at another meeting.
Okay, I understand.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the meeting be adjourned and the emergency parking would stay in place as it is now.
I second it. I second it.
Do we have a motion to leave the emergency parking in place, but we're?
No, to adjourn.
Yeah, to adjourn, to adjourn would, the result of adjournment, if there was a majority vote, would the, the emergency measure would stay in place, beach end parking would still be prohibited. Um, if there, and if there's not a majority that supports adjournment, then, uh, you got, then the council can consider discussing and deciding whether it wants to take up the resolution or give any other direction you wanna give.
Move on, correct. Okay, we got it covered. All right, we had, I'm sorry, I misinterpreted what you said, but call the question on Mr. Brown's motion to leave the emergency parking in place and seconded by Ms. Raymond.
Mayor Proton Brown?
For.
Mayor Hoag?
Against.
State council member Callum? Hello?
Against.
Council member Morrison?
Against.
Council member Raymond?
For.
What? A motion to keep the emergency parking failed, three to two. And we have a resolution that we can vote on or do a favor with?
Excuse me. I want to adjourn the meeting. No, you can't. Why not? Excuse me. I thought the part of the motion that Mayor Proton made was to adjourn the meeting.
That's correct.
But it failed. The motion failed.
All right, fine.
Now, we can do a, none of the motion or we can just adjourn. Is that correct, Mr. Garganese?
Uh, the meeting is still going and you're in the middle of discussion, discussing the beach end parking, so. Then, you know, there's a resolution if the council wants to rescind the emergency measure prohibiting beach end parking and, and if you wanna consider that. Then if you do, then a motion and a second would be in order regarding res- proposed resolution twenty twenty dash eleven.
Right, right. I'm asking. We have a resolution that we can either leave it set or y'all can do a motion and make the resolution go away or stand.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, may I, uh, just ask you a question? Are you comfortable with this resolution, uh, the way it's written?
I don't care for the rescinding part as it is until we have something basically in plan. And I know there's handicap problems. I know that for a fact out there. Uh, and I, I would think that if we take the resolution and, and wordsmith it a little bit to give staff some movement to give us a resolution that'll help this, this situation rather than just open Pandora's gate tomorrow morning. Uh, let's say by Wednesday, they should have a plan where we can do something. But I, I know there's a lot of people hurting. I know there's a lot of people that don't want the parking here. There's a lot of people that live on the beach that probably are sitting there biting their nails. Uh, and I think if we wordsmith this thing to help the situation and not open the gates, let's say, and, and we can take care of the problems that maybe exist and give staff the leeway to get something put together, a plan, like, as been mentioned. Uh, otherwise, I'd, I would just go ahead and leave the motion, the resolution as doing, vote on it and do what you wanna do. I'm, I'm ready to go either way.
Okay, and just one more comment. Um, and so those changes would be to, um, I, I, I didn't hear, it sounded like to me that staff is ready and it sounded like to me that our deputies are ready. And so, um, would you be open to, um, well, I guess that's just a difference that we heard and understanding. What in here, uh, the handicap parking, I guess, maybe, maybe I didn't hear them correctly, but what don't you think they're ready for?
Well, they mentioned the sanitation item, which I know there's tech wood out there. That's not wood. Now, the tech wood is very hot when it sits out in the sun. That ties that, which you probably don't need to do with the UV rays. And, and I, uh, if, I'm saying if we open the beach totally tomorrow morning, you'll probably have every body and their brother out there and every parking spot will be full and you're gonna have garbage all over the place. We only got like two and three garbage cans on some of them street ends. You need like five, maybe.
Okay.
So there are certain things that I would like to see. Staff says, yeah, we can, we can have that ready. Uh, I don't, you know, I don't, you don't have particulars in there, let's say, that we need. Uh, how about porta potties? That was a good suggestion, rather than have dirty diapers laying all over the beach when people leave. That's down there.
Yeah.
No, these type of things.
So if we, um, more trash cans down, and I think that the trash was filling over because they were all concentrated on the one beach entrance and they couldn't relieve the other ones. I think trash is gonna flatten itself out, but I know that Waste Pro has done a fantastic.
It don't normally do it during the summertime, cuz I go down there a lot and I see trash piled up around the garbage cans because there's two garbage cans there. You need four, at least four.
So with extra garbage cans, um, uh, Todd, is that something we could get with our contractor?
Let me ask, uh, Jim Moore. Jim, if you're on the, on the line here, uh, how long it would take to get additional trash cans at the beach end streets? Jim, are you there?
Jim Moore?
Evidently Jim's not there. Um, I'll have to confirm with him on that, but I did ask him earlier about portlets at the beach ends. And he said that we couldn't place the order for the portlets till Monday. And it would probably be a three, probably a, he didn't say, but I'm guessing probably a three-day delivery, perhaps.
So, um, the, the, the trash cans to be determined. I just know that they've been very responsive. It would shock me if they couldn't do something quick or just a secondary pickup tomorrow, uh, or whenever they can to relieve it. Um, as far as the portlets, um, that actually concerns me. I don't, I don't think having people using those, um, you know, i- is a wise idea at each entrance. Um, I think that, uh, that, that is a concern because that is a place, uh, that would be likely to congregate. People are gonna be touching a lot of the same plastic. I don't think that's wise. And so I would recommend steering away from that. Um, uh, but, um, if trash cans can be overcome and, and maybe he'll text you or something, Todd, or message you, I don't know.
I just got an idea from Molly. She said that we have a lot of extra trash cans that are we, that we use for Friday Fest that are at Public Works. Tim, if you're on the phone, or Tim, if you're on the line, if you could let us know what that quantity is and how soon they could be deployed.
And I'll donate my trash can down there if that's what helps, but, uh,
Hey, Todd.
That, that was the big one. And then, yeah, the sanitizing the crossovers, uh, I learned a little there too. I don't think that that's gonna be necessary, but if, if, if tonight, if we directed staff to add in, um, those things, even if, I don't know if that's necessary in this resolution, but if we at least have the confidence to do it, um.
I'll, I'll go along with the, but I, I don't wanna rescind it just because of a couple things. I wanna make sure that staff understands what we want.
Bob, I understand that Jim Moore is on the line now.
Uh, Todd, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. What was the question again? I'm sorry.
Uh, how many trash cans do we have that we could deploy for beach end streets and how soon could that happen?
We have about ten here at the plant. But each, each, uh, crossover in has three cans as of now. So we can add, at the busiest crossovers, add an extra can until Monday till we can get with Waste Pro.
All right, and, um, Molly, if you're on the line, could you talk about any trash cans that Leisure Services has?
Um, last time that I checked, there was at least seven or eight that were stored, um, out behind the racquetball courts that are typically deployed during events that occur right there on Taylor Avenue. If Gustavo still has access to those and those are still back there, those could, um, fill that gap on the additional seven beach ends.
Thank you. Thank you, Molly. Go ahead, Mayor.
That's, that's, seventeen of us plenty, as far as I'm concerned. I see a hand. Mickey?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think that that's good. I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Morrison about the, um, potlet, the, yeah, that's, that's, that's a COVID magnet right there. I, and, and you know, I, and before COVID came along, we didn't have pod, you know, portable toilets. So I, I would not go there. But can we, with the trash cans, I, I think that's But can we, with the trash cans, I, I think that's a good idea. And is there a way that we can have staff order the sanitizing machines that, like we have in city hall, and maybe attach them to the walkovers as another, um, pro, you know, trying to keep the, uh, you know, a way for people to sanitize their hands, uh, entering the beach?
I think majority of the people probably have sanitizer as part of their beach-going equipment. I'd, I'd see it.
Okay.
I think, I think they do have that. I know, I carry it in my truck. It, it's everywhere. My wife has it all over the place.
And I would like to add that.
People with it in their pockets. They take it out.
And I would like to add that if, if there's not enough staff to put trash cans everywhere, I have a truck. I can load some up and help out. I'd be glad to help out.
Don't move it, I'll have it. Better a minute, I'll have it.
Okay.
Mayor? Yes, sir. Mr. Brown?
Regardless of the motion that, um, we, we just voted on, I would have thought that the city would implement the garbage cans regardless of how we decided to go, since they are needed.
They have a better.
I'm, I'm still, I'm still appalled that we are considering opening the beach, and I'm totally against it. After everything, none of you all are scientists or know the facts on this, on this virus. None of you. You're acting like you, like everything is, uh, said and done, etched in stone. I don't want anybody's blood in the city of Cape Canaveral on my hands. Thank you.
Angela?
Yes, all I would like to say is I, I still don't understand why we're rushing. What is the big hurry? I think that since we're going to have a city council meeting, this resolution can be written by staff. We spent a lot of staff time. We spent, now we're going to spend more money. All right. I, I, my problem is, what exactly is the rush? What's the hurry? There is a hurry. No, nobody is like running around. I mean, it's ridiculous. Let the staff do this, and let's get it right. All right? That's what the way I feel about it. Melinda has a plan for reopening the city that I've seen. That's very good. But I think this is just ridiculous that we're rushing to a decision on this. This can be done in a step-by-step process. It should be well thought out with common sense. Not with this. This is all wrong, and I'm very much, I'm very disheartened by this. I'm not afraid of COVID nineteen. I'm out there exercising every day. So I'm not in a panic about this. However, I think this is wrong. This is against what most of the residents want. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I, I think, I think staff has got a plan. I asked them, I asked Todd right point blank what his, what his plans were, and, uh, brought Commander Morrison on the situation to answer a couple questions. For those reasons, uh, and the answer from staff was they're ready other than the sanitizing machine, which is not needed for the crossovers. Uh, and I just come up with the garbage can, uh, myself, because I've seen the trash piled around the garbage cans over there. And opening the beach up to the people would relieve the sheriff's office of spending time running around Harbor Heights and the back streets trying to find bad parkers. And if there are out there with the beach open, and they got them out there, we can close that beach just as quick as we opened it again. Or ideas that we haven't thought of or whatever comes about. But I, I think, you know, being out in the fresh air, that's where I want to be all the time. I don't want to be cooped up in the house. I don't want to be in my car. I want to be outside. And I think that's the best place to be, so. I don't have anything more to say. I'm ready to do something else. We either rescind this thing, accept it as it is, or do something different with it. I see hands going. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I do. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
That already. I'd like to make a.
Uh, we're gonna get to the bottom of this. We're not, we're not gonna, that'd be worse walking out on a problem.
Thank you.
That's walking out on the problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Kellam, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I would like to make a motion, and I don't have the agenda, that we accept the resolution um, with the added trash cans and with the staff's plan to implement whatever else we need to make this happen. I don't know if I'm saying this right, but I would like to make a motion that we do move forward with this, uh, resolution.
Resolution twenty twenty eleven.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I, I second the motion.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Mr. Mayor, if I may, that, um, yes, Mayor Proton Brown, we're not scientists and, but the, the recommendations coming from the science and the healthcare community is that you need to get outside. That these people are in these locked-up spaces and to exercise, like you're saying, and that the.
The business is open now.
Think about a plan to go, we need to take this slow, and we need to think through a plan on the, getting people from the beach through a crossover. I don't know where these hotspots are. If they're touching the crossovers, if they're going back to the gas pumps, we saw the business plans from our local businesses. They are ready. Um, Southern Charm is ready. Zorrella's is ready. Beach Wave is ready. The gas stations are ready. They've got sanitizing stations. That's where you're, we're gonna catch the virus, not out on the beach from what I'm seeing if we're keeping safe distancing. So I think that that is just a, a reply to both of why are we in a hurry and, and we need, we're not scientists, doctors. This phased plan led by the governor is saying, get outside, think about it. You can get your hair cut on Monday, but you can't go out to the beach? Don't understand it.
Hey, we, we have a motion. Is there anybody else who wants to discuss this? Because I'm a, I'm gonna try to see if I can do something here to.
Yes, Mayor, uh, Todd here.
I'm sorry?
Todd here, just for clarification, I want to ask Jim about the timing of this. Jim, could you have the trash cans out tomorrow, barricades down tomorrow by nine AM, and I'll push you just a little bit more, Jim? Can we get signage on the crossovers like congregating on the crossovers by nine AM tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jim. That's all, Mayor.
Sounds like part of a good plan, but I'm a, I'm gonna ask for one thing if we can. Uh, if it's the council's agreement on adding a little bit to this motion to have a report daily from now until maybe like this, through this weekend, to see what kind of activities have been taking place out there, uh, whether they're not gathering, whether they are gathering, and the sheriff's office can be out there just like normal and give us a report, and if we have a big problem, Monday, the eighteenth, we can write an order to close it.
Yes, Mayor, I will ha- I will ask Commander Walters to include that in the beach tabs report, um, on Saturday and Sunday that will address not only the beach parking areas, but also the beach parking crossovers.
I would like, I would like it every day, Todd, if we could. If they're gonna be out there every day, just give us a count, and are they behaving themselves? And, uh, that'll give us a good tally for the week of how real bad, and you can report back, and we can draw a quick meter together and.
We can do that. Absolutely, we can do that, sir.
Thank you.
That's where I stand. I'm sorry, we got a split decision on this, but I'd like to see the beach get open too, but I want to open it with an idea of what we're gonna do, not just open.
Okay.
And I think with the sheriff's office out there looking, giving us a count every day, you guys will get an idea how many people are out there. The weekend's gonna be crowded, guarantee you. And we'll all see what, see what the trash goes along with, and we can put a note up there. If the trash continues, we'll close the beach. You know, it's simple little things we can do. I'm done. Anybody got anything to say? All the question on the motion? We did have a second?
Yes.
I seconded.
I'm saying you had a second, Ms. Kellam, right?
Yep.
All the motion? Put it to bed.
So do we call the roll?
Okay.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
For the record, I voted against it.
Mayor Hoag?
For.
Councilmember Kellam?
For.
Councilmember Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Raymond?
Against.
Okay, the motion to open the beach on the Resolution twenty twenty, as it was written with a few little amendments that we put on it, passed. Is there any further council business that they want to discuss? Mickey?
I would just like to say thank you to, um, you know, the staff who are doing a great job and, um, and getting this together and making it happen tomorrow. I think it's, and like you said, Mayor, we can, uh, keep a tab on it, see how it's going. I think that's the best idea, um, to get people, you know, they're already at the beach, they're already gonna go, and now they can park legally. Thank you, and thank the staff for all their hard work, and thank you, Commander Walters, for all you guys are doing out there. I wouldn't want your job, and thank you so much. That's it.
Anybody else? Mickey? I mean, Angela? Nothing? What?
I just want to say, uh, thank you as well to the staff for putting this together. I didn't expect it, but I'm not mad about it. I think that had this not been ready to go, we could have taken the act. Thank you, Anthony, Mia, Daniel, and Todd, and everyone else who was involved. Um, the, the, um, I'm gonna reach out to KBB and some of the other volunteer groups after this um, week. I know it's, um, Mother's Day, and see if we can't get a coordinated beach cleanup. I'm gonna go walk it with them, so. Everyone's invited if they can accept, because I hear the diapers and the concerns after, and we can go out and make sure that it's sanitized after for the community. And yes, thank you, Commander Walters. Thank you to Chief Sergeant as well, and everyone who is out there working hard. Um, and, and we can do this right. These are the types of moments that bring the community together. And if we get out and we communicate and we start encouraging one another, uh, we're gonna get through this virus, and thank you for all your courage, Mr. Mayor, and Mickey, and everyone else. Y'all good, good night.
Okay, I just wanna wish all the citizens of Mother's in Cape Canaveral a happy Mother's Day. I am in total disagreement, but we'll, we'll work through this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, staff, for what you do.
Okay, uh, thanks, everybody. Uh, I don't have anything to say without, then wish everybody a happy Mother's Day. I've already taken care of that business, I know. And, uh, I'm gonna call back to staff and see if there's anybody who needs to say something before we adjourn.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Nobody else? Hearing nothing? We'll adjourn. Thank you. Good night.